Just to just take a moment and send our love and good wishes to the families in Florida this evening. I know there are some parents who are still waiting to hopefully be reunited with their students and children, so we could just take a moment. Thank you. On our agenda this evening, we're going to move one of our items. Our work sessions will begin with a presentation on the Montgomery County Development Review Process. That will be followed by a discussion of school facility needs, and then we will be discussing state highway administration projects in the community. So we'll just make that change. Looking forward to council meetings in the near future. Next week, on February 21st, we will be meeting here at 7:30. We'll have a proclamation on Rare Disease Day, February 28th. We have a voting session that evening, the second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code Title VIII of outdoor cafes. Then we have a resolution authorizing submission of FY 2019 Community Development Block Grant Projects. Our work sessions next week will be the quarterly financial report for quarters one and two, and a discussion of the personal property tax. Then on Monday, February 26th, we will have a forum on draft strategic plan regarding housing that will be here in the auditorium starting at 7:00 PM. And then on Wednesday, February 28th, we will be having a council meeting in the azalea room, so not in here, it will be in the azalea room. We will start at 7:30 PM, and it will be a roundtable discussion with the city council and the city's senior leadership team to review the city council priorities. The public is welcome to attend that if you'd like to, but that will be at 7:30 in the azalea room. Then on Monday, March 5th, the city council will be meeting with the Green Team. This is a joint meeting of the Committee on the Environment and the City Council, known as our Green Team Meeting, and that will also be in the azalea room starting at 7:30. Then on Wednesday, March 7th, we're back here at 7:30 for our regular meeting. We'll have a voting session that evening for a single reading ordinance awarding a renewable energy supplier contract for the switch to 100% renewable campaign, a resolution adopting the council priorities, a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for a stormwater study, and tentatively, well, depending on how our conversation goes this evening, we may have a resolution regarding school facilities. On March 7th, we have three work sessions. An introduction to the Neighborhood Services Team will come and give a report. We will also have a report from our police department, their annual report, and then we're scheduled to have an FY 2018 Budget Amendment Number Three discussion that evening. And that'll take us through to March 7th. All right? And then this evening, we have an update from our youth council, and we have one of our youth council members here. Are you ready to go? Yep, just come up to the podium.
So at our last meeting, we sent out, not our most recent meeting, but the one before that, we sent out a survey to Tacoma youth, asking them what their priorities were, what they think needed to happen for them in Tacoma. We had 82 people respond so far. The survey will continue to be available probably through our next meeting. So we've looked at the results. We've been able to draw a couple conclusions, including there's a significant amount of interest from youth in a town hall forum for students and youth to suggest ideas and stuff like that. We definitely need to do more outreach, especially to middle schoolers. Almost everyone who responded to the survey was in high school, and middle schoolers especially said that they had not heard of us. We're going to begin an email newsletter probably pretty soon to send out to people who provided their emails. That was marked, people marked that as the best way to communicate, and it seems like a great way to get our information out. There's also a significant amount of interest in learning more about city government. People said that they didn't know very much about it, and one of the options people put for that was city officials visiting schools, if that's ever possible. So for the next election, we also hope to create a youth voter guide for students who are voting. That's about the candidates and the issues on the ballot, so that they have more interest and they, more knowledge about what they're voting for. On the survey, a lot of them said that they didn't quite know what they were voting on. We were also including Christian as our Police Explorers Liaison, which is another youth program for Tacoma. We have a few upcoming events. On April 6th, we will be attending the Blair High School Climate Summit and sponsoring it as well. We're not, we're still working on with them on what exactly that entails. And on April 21st, we'll be working on a project with the Tacoma Park Middle School Difference Makers, painting that stairway by Tacoma Park Elementary. Later that day, there is a tentatively scheduled talent show at the Tacoma Park Middle School, which we will hope to work with Police Explorers on sponsoring and helping to organize. We are going to reach out to Ward Five residents to fill our vacancy. We still do not have a, we still do not have a council member from Ward Five, so we're working on that. We're, we have a more comprehensive outreach plan, and we would like to get into contact with Councilmember Smith about potential methods for this and about filling that vacancy. So, and I believe this was mentioned last meeting, the youth councils were interested in taking up the idea of a youth bill of rights, but we would like to request some guidelines or some parameters on, and specifications on what exactly this entails and what you guys want to be on it. That's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And George, can you remind everybody your name?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm George Ashford.
Thank you. And I have one thing to update you on that regarding working with students. Last year, we did a fourth grade essay contest. It's actually a statewide contest, if I were mayor, and we're going to do it again this year. And locally, we select two students who then get to spend the day with me, the mayor, and see what it's like. So we're going to be doing that with the fourth graders at Piney Branch this year.
Awesome.
Great, terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. All right. Now we will take public comments on voting items. We have one voting item this evening, the first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code Title VIII. It's regarding outdoor cafes or eating areas in the city. Any comments on that? No comments, then we'll go directly to general public comments. If you have any public comments, please come to the podium, state your name. Mr. Lovelace, you can start us off. Go ahead, Mr. Lovelace.
Okay, my name's Pat Lovelace, your official priest Elliot. 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I wanted to ask you people out there that the, you know, why don't they sit down and negotiate with the city workers? There are city workers too, in our city. We got to realize, you know, that they may have an issue there, and they may, and they want to be heard, and they want to be negotiated with. But I thought Tacoma Park was a city where you would never have to worry about that, that they would be willing to negotiate. And if they find there's no cause for anything, then it should be made open and told everything about it. And also, if it's a wage issue, if it's a work issue, or whatever it is, we should be willing to sit down and negotiate with them. And I'd like to see that with our city workers. It's my city, my workers, remember that. It's our city, it's our workers. And also, I'd like to let Terry Siemens know that I got something he might be very interested in knowing about. We got another notice about the marijuana issue in our building. They're threatening to take our leases away if we caught smoking marijuana in the building or even using medical marijuana, because I think a lot of it is due to HUD. I'm not 100% sure, but this is another notice we got, threatening to take our leases away immediately, taking our subsidies away. That's going to render a lot of people homeless in the city, that they're using it to get rid of pain. I mean, I thought we were trying to get rid of the opiates, because it'd be much safer if they were using marijuana than using opiates. And even if they're using it recreationally, it's a lot safer than the opiates. You're not going to be taking a dead body out of an apartment 18 days after they died because they played around with opiates. Could you bring that down to Terry Siemens? My city council member, pass it around to the city council. Great. And I'd like to let, see if people can unite about that and prevent that from happening. If they asked the police help on evicting people on subsidized housing just for marijuana, I'd like to ask the police not to take part in it. And I'd like to ask the city council if they could pass that along, because I don't think it's a fair thing to do. We've got a lot more serious crime out there rather than marijuana, and that needs to be addressed first. We also don't need to render more people homeless to put on the poverty level.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace.
Thank you very much for letting me tell you about this. Bye-bye. Love it, love it, love it.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Any other public comments this evening?
I hope so.
Yeah. Hi, Mary Jane Machuie, Ward Two.
I'd first like to say a prayer for the lives lost in that Florida high school. It's just really, 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 really sad and angry about the situation with too many guns and too many people who shouldn't have them. I was kidding with my son, I says maybe they should just allow, kick all the guns away from the men, because otherwise, who usually could run shooting people? But anyways, we got a letter last July, Parents of Special Needs Adults, from the city stating that we'd have $10,000 for recreation for this fiscal year. Well, I thought fiscal year is going to end July 1st, so I'm concerned that I haven't, we haven't heard anything back about this. And second of all, I'd just like to thank, and I recommend a book called My Brother Charlie, which is a great book. It should be required reading if it's not in, like, in grade school. It's by, I apologize if I mispronounces her name, Holly Robinson, P.T. is it? I'm sorry, I'm not a football fan. Her husband is a big NFL player, but Robinson's a lot easier to say, but I just recommend this. It's in our library, it's a great book. My son has autism, so I really, really would recommend it, and thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Machuie. Any other public comments this evening? All right, we'll move on to council comments. Any council members have comments this evening? Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. One is that we have scheduled a coffee for Ward Three, which will be on March 16th, Friday, March 16th, at 8:00 AM, and it will be at Mid-Atlantic Seafood on New Hampshire Avenue. So I hope to see a lot of people come out to that. We're also working on, we have a tentative schedule for Saturday, June 9th, for another Ward Three gathering kind of coffee event at a park. TBD where exactly, but that'll be just an opportunity to meet at a different location and chat, so I hope everybody will come out to those events. I also want to thank the police department, the city manager, and our communications specialist, Jeremy Dickey, for some of their work on making some changes to the website that I had asked for, that I think will be a big improvement in relation to getting some information that members of the public might be interested in. There, I had asked for an easier way to access police bulletins that were sent out to people through email, and so the police department and Jeremy put together a page where citizens can, or residents can go in and see old bulletins that have been posted. So, you know, if there's, there was a crime that happened, and you see something that seems similar to that, and you'd seen a previous bulletin, you might be interested in going back and kind of reviewing that. So I think that'll be really helpful. And then the other thing was the creation of a city manager, a place on the city manager page to post your weekly updates, which I think will be hugely helpful, because I know you put a lot of time into them, and then sometimes they get lost, so I think that'll be great. And then finally, I just wanted to give a report back from an event that I was part of this last week. I am part of the Council of Governments Transportation Planning Board, and as part of that, we have a committee called the Access for All Committee that I am chairing, and I had a chance to chair the first, my first meeting last week. And this is a really interesting group, and I think the topic of the group is really important. The focus is on looking at needs of people who are traditionally underrepresented in transportation, so that includes people with disabilities, seniors, people with limited income, people of color, and also people with limited English skills. So it's a really broad range, but I think it's a really important thing to be talking about, and I was really interested in the discussions we had. That particular meeting was focused on a discussion with the people there who are representatives of government agencies as well as community groups, and just, you know, regular residents who have these issues themselves, you know, if they have a disability themselves or they have a family member who has a disability. And so we were talking about unmet transportation needs in the region. This is for the whole region, Virginia, DC, and Maryland. And there were some really interesting points brought up related to affordability and accessibility, as well as the use of technology, and people who aren't able to use technology due to intellectual disabilities or affordability issues. So it was a really interesting opportunity for me to learn about some of these issues and things I think we can hopefully maybe explore a little bit in Tacoma Park as well. Those meetings I also, are also open to the public, so I encourage people, if they're interested, you can talk to me, or you can also go online and read the minutes from those. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Friday, I went to the nice funeral for Robin Chee, who was the lady who used to live in the bus stop at Maple Avenue and Lincoln Avenue. I thought the funeral was very nice, there were many family members there. I particularly wanted to thank Mayor Stewart and Chief Duval, Captain Collington, and the other officers from the police department who attended the event. It was sad to see her passing, but it was a nice funeral. I also wanted to mention that there is a GoFundMe account where we are trying to collect some funds to help defer the costs of the funeral for the family. And if you don't find the GoFundMe under Robin Chee, R. Chee, that's C-H-E-W-E, you can email me at TerryS@TacomaParkMD.gov, and I can send you the link. Thank you.
Councilmember Ceci?
Happy Valentine's, everyone, Valentine's Day. I just encourage everyone to remember to express your love to your loved ones, remember to love your neighbors, introduce yourself to a new neighbor, and definitely, definitely, definitely remember to love yourself on a day like today. So, just wanted to say that, and have a couple of reminders. To end the vein of helping the community and volunteering, yes, that's what we all want to do, right? There are a couple of really, really, really important organizations in the city that are now looking for volunteers. The Village of Tacoma Park is definitely in need of support. What they do is provide support services to seniors such as transportation and things like that, so I encourage everyone to please just take a look at their website, and if you are available to drive one of your elderly neighbors to an appointment or to city council meetings, definitely sign up. And their website is villageoftacoma park dot com. We also have the Crossroads Community Food Network that is also looking for volunteers. They do a lot, especially in Ward Six, they facilitate a farmer's market on Wednesdays there. So they have a number, a wide array of programming to youth, they run a community kitchen, and they need extra hands. So if you are interested in helping out, please check out their website at the Crossroads Community, no the, just Crossroads Community Food Network dot org. Definitely, please try to figure out a way to be of service to the community. Lastly, there is going to be a joint coffee with the mayor and representatives from Cindy, myself, who will be at, it's going to be on February the 23rd at La Chiquita at 8:00 AM. So please, 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 Ward Two, Ward Six residents come out. We also will have city staff that will be there to talk a little bit about the Ethan Allen Gateway Project that definitely will impact Wards Two and Six. So again, Happy Valentine's Day, and thank you all so much.
Great. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I had mentioned previously that WSSC held a meeting last week on the upcoming Philadelphia Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, which is going to have an impact on traffic, probably starting in the spring. And there were a few issues that came up in that meeting that I thought maybe I could just mention to the city manager, and you could check in and get back to me on. So first off, there's a question about parking issues. Most people on Philadelphia Avenue may not have driveways and don't need, don't need to park, but the side streets are going to be affected. And so one of the questions was, how would that be enforced? And in particular, and this dates back to the snowstorm, there's normally a requirement that you not just park somewhere for 72 straight hours, but in some cases with the snow, people end up getting tickets. I don't know if something like that's going to happen, but I would just urge that we be, you know, sort of forgiving if people have to move around just to deal with the parking. So that's the first one. The second one is the WSSC staff said that they would be working from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, but there will be some activity staging and so on most days prior to nine o'clock. And so I just want to make sure that we understand if the regular or some other requirements apply in terms of the noise ordinances and so on, given that they're a utility, and I'm not sure exactly how that works. Third, storage of the equipment had come up, and WSSC said that was normally up to the contractor, but I assume we would want to have some role in telling them where they could or at least couldn't put the stuff. Maybe they'll keep it far away, we don't know, but it's not in use. And then the last one was trees, and they mentioned a small number of trees, fewer than tennis sounded like, might potentially have to be cut down, mostly because they've grown right into where the, where the water main is. But I just want to make sure, since we did have some issues with Pepco the last time around, that if they're consulting with the Urban Forest Manager, that we have that process operate correctly. So, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
A couple of things. First, I would like to thank the city manager for participating in taping of Moco Spotlight, the television.
I'm sure it was wonderful.
It's fantastic. It's the start of a new career. Moco Spotlight is a show that I created as president of the Montgomery County Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League, and we discussed the proposal that was sent out to the county council and the county executive regarding tax duplication. I think it was a really good show. And I also want to thank City TV, you know, they're rock stars when it comes to doing these segments. Finally, I want to thank councilmember Marnie Shaw. She was my co-host, and she did a great job. Second thing, I would like to remind my colleagues that tomorrow will be the Meet and Confer Meeting with the county executive at the county executive's office in Rockville. If you have not contacted Monica Marquina, the secretary of the chapter, to get permission to park in the garage, please send her an email, because it is really difficult to get access to that garage. It starts at 6:30. I would hope you get there around six o'clock. This is an opportunity for the county executive to present the budget to the municipal officials in Montgomery County. And then finally, yesterday, I had an opportunity to sit on a forum. It was called Federalism 101: Transportation and Infrastructure at the Capitol. It was sponsored by Representative Bishop from Utah. I was joined by Rep. Andrew McLean from Maine, and Gary Moore, Boone County, Kentucky. And we're trying to figure out that, you know, since there's going to be this, hopefully, transportation infrastructure bill coming out, and how this will impact local government and state governments, and trying to get a chance to shape this future legislation. So, thank you.
Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah, just briefly, we had an informative meeting with Long Branch Sligo residents and Washington guests on Monday night. They showed a map and some, and presented some information about the next stages of the work in the Long Branch neighborhood. It'll be posted both on the Neighborhood Association website and on the city website, so if you weren't able to make the meeting, take a look and look at some of the details. It answered a lot of the questions about details of the project. And thank you to Daryl in Public Works for helping to put it together.
Great, thank you. Just a couple of updates. Want to thank everybody, particularly our rec. department and City TV, and Pat Rumba, and all the volunteers for a great play day on Sunday. Given the weather that we had all weekend, it was very nice to have someplace to go Sunday afternoon to play, make Valentines, and do some other things, and I even got to do a little double dutch. So it was a great afternoon. The other thing that we had last night, we swore in a new officer here in the city, and many people may know Officer Atticilt, because he's grown up here in Tacoma Park and worked for our rec. department, and now is one of our officers. So the last two people we've sworn in, this officer and our chief, are two people who have grown up in Tacoma Park and are now serving in our police department. So that's terrific. And I just want to thank Councilwoman Kostick for the changes that have been made to the website. It's terrific, so thank you very much for thinking of those. I'll turn it now over to the city manager for her comments.
Thanks very much. Well, it's Valentine's Day, it's Frederick Douglass's purported 200th birthday, the one he claims, and it's time for the constant yield numbers. So I know that, slide that right in there. To me, it's just really disconcerting to always have this thing come on Valentine's Day every year. In any event, we did receive our Constant Yield Tax Rate Certification document today from the state of Maryland. As you know, our current real property tax rate in the city is 53.48 cents per $100 assessed value, net assessed value. The tax, that tax rate, the 53.48, is expected to result in revenue to the city of $12,135,000 this fiscal year. The computations that were done by the state, and there's a little magic involved with this, the computations that were involved, showed that to keep the exact same amount of revenue next year, the tax rate would need to be lowered to 50 cents, 50.75 cents, a reduction of 2.73 cents. If the property rate were kept at the current 53 cents, the city's tax revenue on the larger net assessable base would be $12,788,000, which is an increase of about $650,000. The increased amount of assessable base and tax amount has been about the same percentage and ratio for the last three years, so that was kind of an interesting thing to look at. What this all means when we look at expenses and those kinds of things, I don't know yet, but I think it shows, to me, the numbers were a little bit reassuring that there's nothing dramatic going on, that we're increasing, it's not increasing really fast, it's not decreasing, and so I think that that's a comfortable piece of information for us. How it works when we get to the budget is a whole discussion to come. We have a council intern coming on board, February 20th. His name is Evan Gittleman. He's a recent Virginia Tech graduate who majored in Public and Urban Affairs, minored in Political Science. And we appreciated that the mayor and councilmember Kovar helped do interviews for the position. This, this intern will work part-time for the, in this position as council intern, reporting to Jason, and will work with the council on what he does. He also will be able to work part-time as an intern for the city clerk, and so we're able to take advantage of his, his time and skills perhaps a little more efficiently, because we did have an internship position open in the city clerk's office. So that, that helps perhaps. perhaps make it more likely he will stay, but also something that may be more efficient as we go forward. You should be receiving an introductory email from him to find out your interests and the kinds of projects that you have your eyes set on for him to work on. I do want to provide an update on Dorothy's Woods and the Washington-McLaughlin property. The Department of Housing and Urban Development has agreed to release its lien on the city's Dorothy's Woods property. This leaves one remaining encumbrance on Dorothy's Woods, which is a lien held by Fairview Investment Fund. The city will continue to take every step possible to preserve Dorothy's Woods and will now work to obtain the release of the remaining encumbrance. That's all we can say, but we are working on it. We have information in the city manager's report on the Montgomery County Highways and Transitways Master Plan, which is being reviewed and revised. There's information on the Montgomery County planning website. And they are having some hearings coming up on February 15 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Planning Office Headquarters, which is on Georgia in Silver Spring. And so, the public is invited to attend or submit comments. Was, I don't think it was not last week, but the week before. When was the Crossroads Farmers Market folks?
It was just last week.
Yeah, it seems like forever ago. Anyway, they came, one of the things that they mentioned is that they wanted to begin their market season a little earlier than in previous years. And so, we will need to have a resolution that authorizes the use of the street at that earlier time. That is scheduled at this point to come before the council in mid-March, but they would like to feel comfortable advertising the earlier start date in advance of that mid-March resolution. We've checked with our police department and other staff. The earlier start date is fine with city staff. If you're comfortable with them going ahead and advertising that, recognizing you can still change your mind when the resolution comes before you, I'd like to at least give them some confidence that they can start doing their advertising. And so, if anybody has concerns about that, please let me know. But if you're comfortable with it, I'd like to just say it's okay. And Ms. Hertz, you suggested it was all right?
Yes, I support it.
Okay. I wanted to give kudos to our facility staff and our information systems staff. For the council members who may have been on the third floor of the building recently, we're almost done with the renovations of the human resources and housing and community development areas. The work was done almost entirely in-house. It saved the city a great deal of money, and they did a wonderful job. It's not huge changes. It's mostly superficial changes, but it really looks much better. So, very pleased. And I wanted to, the number of hours the folks put in was really quite extensive, and we really appreciate it. Wanted to note on upcoming schedules that Mr. Dan Wedber will be disappearing in a few hours for a brief vacation before we really get into some of the difficult budget time in terms of budget preparation. So, he'll be away February 15 through the 23. This is the time, we've got new council members here, but this is the time of season when I say, please don't bug me or other senior staff with non-time-sensitive items if you can. Because being a very small staff right now and for the next six weeks, we are completely consumed with budget preparation, getting information ready to bring to you in early April. So, it's, obviously, we'll do the best we can, but the more that you can deflect questions or ask for us to come back after April, the better. Open any other questions you may have?
Great. Any questions for the city manager? All right, then, we will move, ask our deputy city manager to provide the legislative update, please.
Sure. And I'll make this very quick. I just wanted to provide you with a few updates. First, I wanted to make sure that you knew that we submitted testimony on five legislative items this week, including House Bill 806, which is the Education Summer Meals Expansion Grant Pilot Program. Essentially, what that bill would do is create a program to increase funds for food for children during the summer. Obviously, we supported that one. We also submitted testimony in support of House Bill 878, the Public Utilities Renewable Energy, Electric, and Gas Bills, also called the 100% Clean Renewable Energy Equity Act of 2018. This would make permanent the Community Solar Energy Generating System Program and establish new renewable energy portfolio standards. That testimony included just basically a paragraph saying that we supported it and referred to the resolution that you all passed three weeks ago regarding that topic. We also submitted testimony in opposition to House Bill 1549, the county's municipal corporations' sanctuary laws for illegal aliens, a prohibition that would require local governments to fully comply with and support federal immigration law. We submitted testimony in support of House Bill 995. That's the Just Cause Eviction Bill, which was introduced and sponsored by the entire Montgomery County delegation. Essentially, that prohibits landlords from evicting tenants without just cause, and the bill states what qualifies as just cause. And it also requires certain notification provisions. And finally, we submitted testimony in support of House Bill 977, which was introduced by Delegate Wilkins. This is the S.H.A. Neighbor Notification Act, which would essentially require that S.H.A. provide notification to nearby property owners where they're going to be doing major construction at least two weeks in advance. I also wanted to note one bill, House Bill 1272, which is cross-filled as Senate Bill 738. That's sponsored by Delegate Hickson, and that is the creation of state debt for the Tacoma Park Library. And if successful, that would get us another $250,000 to be used as a grant for library renovations. And finally, just a heads up, something that'll be coming before you probably next week is a resolution regarding House Bill 988, which is cross-filled as Senate Bill 855. That's the 2020 Census Grant Program Establishment and Funding. Essentially, what that would do is establish a grant program at the state level that local governments could apply for in advance of the 2020 census in order to supplement funds in the hopes of getting a more accurate population count. Montgomery County is recognized as one of the counties in Maryland where it's very difficult to get an accurate population count, and so, this would work towards improving that. And that's all I have for today.
Great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you very much for that update. We will now move on to our voting session. We have the first reading ordinance, amending the Tacoma Park Code Title VIII. We had a work session on this last week. I think there was just one minor change at the end, where we changed city-imposed limitation on alcohol sales to on hours. This is under Section E. Other than that, there were no other changes. Does anybody have any questions before I ask it to be moved? Oh, does someone like to move this? And do I have a second? Councilmember Kovar moved it. Councilmember Smith, second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Anyone opposed? Any abstaining? All right. We'll bring that back for our second reading. Next, we have our work session. The first up is the presentation on the Montgomery County Development Review Process.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce our county colleagues, who we've invited to give you an overview of the development review process, recognizing that there are a number of large projects that will are coming up and in the foreseeable future. Joining us this evening are Robert Cronenberg. He's the chief of the Area One Planning Department. And Elsa Heisel McCoy, who is the master planner and regulatory supervisor for Area One as well.
Thank you, Sarah. My name's Elsa Heisel McCoy, Ward One resident. And I supervise the team that reviews the development applications inside the Beltway, which of course includes the city. So, what I'm going to do tonight, because the processes can be very complicated, is to sort of give you a broad overview and then answer questions. So, the main ones that we deal with, I'm going to start with first. And the process starts with public notice. And so, applicants are required to hold community meetings. They're required to post signs on the site, and they are required to send out mailings to adjoining and confronting property owners and homeowners associations within a mile of the site, saying, this is the application. It's been submitted. And there are three main types of review for your typical development project. Some of the details will change depending on the zone, but generally speaking, this is the way things work. So, we have a standard method and optional methods. Standard method is sort of a by-right development. Optional method is the higher intensity type of development. And so, an optional method development will start with a sketch plan that looks at sort of the big picture. The next step after that, and so, the big picture is sort of the development envelope and sort of the big moves. A preliminary plan of subdivision will define the number and size of the lots. The Ethan Jackson property at Ethan Allen Avenue and Jackson Avenue that was approved by the planning board last month was such a plan. And so, again, the plan defines the lots. It includes also any dedication of right-of-way and the adequate public facilities test, which includes a traffic test, schools test, those are generally the two big ones, and then also fire and rescue is part of the review and the utilities. And then finally, you have the site plan review, which is where the details are sort of worked out. So, generally speaking, when someone submits one of these applications, and the rest of this will be sort of similar for each type of review, it will go to an inter-agency review committee called the Development Review Committee, the DRC, for projects in the city. Roz and her staff and Sarah are involved in that. And it is a technical review. So, county DOT, permitting services, housing and community affairs, and the utilities, in addition to planning staff, are looking at the application and providing technical comments. Members of the public are invited to come and watch, but because it is a technical review, not participate. Though, I will say that, you know, once the notices go up, we encourage folks to reach out to the department. Each project will have a lead reviewer, and it's important for folks to establish that rapport early on. They can ask questions. They can, you know, be updated. So, we encourage folks to reach out as early as possible. So, after comments are provided to the applicant through the Development Review Committee, the applicant is expected to make changes to address the comments. And then, the planning staff will do a thorough analysis of the zoning in question, the master plan recommendations, address design compatibility and compatibility issues, transportation questions, and environmental questions. And there's a lot more there, but that's sort of a broad brush. And then, the staff will prepare a recommendation on the application, either recommend for approval or recommend for denial, with conditions. And then, that goes to the planning board for their review. The planning board, there's public notice, 10 days minimum for regulatory items that are posted on the website, and a notice postcard goes out to the folks on the mailing list that the meeting is coming up. For sketch plans, by code, this typically takes 90 days. It can take a little bit longer depending on the issues. And for preliminary plans of a subdivision and site plans, also 120 days. Now, again, you know, this is assuming that all of the steps that I just described sort of happened one after the other, you know, for various reasons. If there are issues that are not addressed, for the Ethan Jackson project, there was a noise analysis that the applicant sort of took a little bit longer to do. So, that process was longer than 90 days, but these are the general timeframes. Any questions on that? It's intuitive and straightforward, right? Who wouldn't understand what this, why am I even here? So, Roz has this, and my information is on here. Sir?
Yes. What happens during the process if you need or want to change the zoning of a particular parcel?
So, I will get to the zoning process in a moment, but essentially, only the county council can change zoning on a property.
Right. But if you need to make that request?
So, essentially, it would put this process on hold, and then, there would be a separate process that I'll go through in a little bit more detail in just a moment. But essentially, they would need to go through a separate process to change the zoning. To change the zoning for one property is typically to apply a floating zone. Of course, when master plans and sector plans are done, there is a sectional map amendment that covers a larger area. But for rezonings of particular properties, it's a local map amendment. But if there's, you know, a desire, need to change zoning, I mean, typically, if the zoning's not there, they won't apply, because they wouldn't be able to go through the process. If there's an abandonment of a public right-of-way, that, again, goes through the council if it is an approved right-of-way or goes through the planning board if it's an unimproved right-of-way. If it goes through the planning board, it can sort of run concurrently, but typically, if something, you know, is going through council, it's going to have a life of its own. This will be put on hold, and then those other things will be addressed. Sometimes, they'll do those and then these.
Okay. I think we have a couple of other questions. Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah. So, this is the simple version?
Yes.
Okay. So, what kicks this off? An applicant sending in the application forms online?
Right. So, typically, the way it starts is that folks will come in to the planning department. They'll call me up and say, Elsa, we want to do something on this property. Can we come in and talk to you?
Okay.
And they'll come in and they'll meet with my team, and we'll give them initial comments based on technical areas of expertise, but also our experience. And then, everything, all of these applications are now electronic, probably for the last, I don't know, a couple of years? And so, everything's filed electronically. All of these application materials are available online in PDF. And so, there is an application process. There is, what's sort of not on here is, we have a division that reviews the applications for completeness, and that can take some time. So, if I'm submitting an application, I'll submit my application materials, and that division will look at it and make sure everything's there. If it's not, they'll say, Elsa, you're missing A, B, C, D. Then, I will have some time to do it. So, there's a little bit of back and forth to make sure that all of the materials that need to be part of the application are there. And then, once the application is accepted as complete, then this process formally starts.
And then, this is three steps?
So, it is three steps. So, this full process is really for projects that are in a mixed-use development zone, so downtown Silver Spring, downtown Bethesda. I think the city has mixed-use zoning in Tacoma Langley. I think in some of the Long Branch areas, there's mixed-use zoning. But for a property, for example, Ethan Jackson that I mentioned, it's owned for single-family residential, so they only had to do the preliminary plan. So, the specifics of the zoning and the specifics of the proposal can trigger or relieve the applicant of having to do these various steps.
Okay. Councilwoman Kostic?
I think you might have just answered my question, but my question was, are these, like, three separate, is it 90 days for the sketch plan that's completed, and then they do the next preliminary plan, another 120 days in addition to that, or can they happen concurrently?
That's a very good question. Typically, they will happen, they'll happen in sort of two groups, and it's usually, it's the preliminary plan will go with the sketch plan, or the preliminary plan will go with the site plan. That's typically the way it goes. That's typically the way it goes. And I think we'll see for the, for the Tacoma Junction project, there are a couple of steps, I think they'll be doing the preliminary plan and the site plan together. It's, it's really the sketch plan and the site plan that don't want to go together because it's really the level of detail of a sketch plan is intended to just look at the big picture and not get down into the weeds. And again, you know, if there are things that need to be changed, it's early enough in the process that they can do that. Sometimes, there are projects, the Marriott International Headquarters had all three at once, the redevelopment of the police station site in, on Montgomery Avenue in Bethesda had all three at once. It is very much the exception. It's very, and it's very difficult, I think it's difficult for staff, it's difficult for the reviewing agencies, and I think the planning board heard at the public hearing that it's difficult for the community because it's a lot, it's a lot that happens all at once, and so you don't get, you know, an opportunity to have the issues raised at sketch plan, and then have a few months to sort of figure out how to implement them before the site plan comes in.
And can you just talk a little bit again about what the sketch plan involves? That was the broader look.
So, a sketch plan is a, is a broad review. The, it's, so we have one now at, in Fenton Village area of Silver Spring, the, the old office building at Sligo and Fenton, and it's basically a big picture. It's saying, this is, this is the site, this is how much density we're allowed to do, and these are sort of pictures of what it might look like. And for projects that get extra density, they have to provide certain public benefits. And so, whereas at site plan, you're getting into the specifics of the, of the benefit, the zoning code lays them out in categories and then specifics, at the sketch plan, you're looking at sort of the broad categories.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. One of the things I'm curious about is the way information flows back and forth. So, on something like Tacoma Junction, my guess is we'll all be aware of major developments as they come along, but on smaller projects like the one that you mentioned, the Jackson and Ethan Allen, so I know we talked about that here, and then eventually forwarded a resolution to the planning board, but then do we automatically get notified at each step as to whether, you know, that's approved or not approved? And if so, does that just go to the city, or does it go to elected officials? Or how does that process work? Do you have to sign up explicitly if you're an interested person, et cetera?
So, in terms of coordination between the city, our staffs coordinate very, very frequently, and so, you know, we communicate regularly. The, so in terms of the major milestones, the city was noticed as, as the other parties were, for example, about the hearing, and should have received notice about the, that the staff report was online. The way the process is set up, notification is really done when the application is submitted, and then when it goes to the board. And so, and those notifications are really about the fact that this application has been submitted, this application is going to the board. The, the sort of more detailed updates are really, you know, the information is available online, but to really know what's happening in between sort of the checkpoints, it's important to establish a relationship with the lead reviewer, and either through them or through me or through, through Robert. And we hear from quite a number of, we hear from quite a number of folks.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Susie?
So, I guess I want to piggyback off of Councilmember Kovar's question about community engagement and when those public meetings are held. Having lived through one example of a project kind of working its way through the, through the process, and at what point, I think one of the main challenges was at the sketch plan, big picture stage, talking to folks about, the general public about what they want to see and what they, they don't want to see when there isn't very much detail can prove problematic. But it also seems that once you get to the detailed site, site plan stage, that's too late. So, at what state, I mean, is it at the discretion of the developer to reach out to the community at the time in which they think it's important? Or are there specific, specific points in the process where, where, you know, you all would require community, a public meeting in addition to the hearings, the hearings that you all might, might facilitate as well?
Right. The, one piece that's not, that, that's here in a brief mention is the master plan. And so, the master plans are a lengthy process, and there's a lot of community involvement from the initial stage is all the way up through the council approval. And so, in terms of what folks are looking for at a particular site, I think the biggest impact is participation in the master plan process. Because when we, you know, when we get a development in, so the master plan not only sets the zoning for the site, but it also has any recommendations that are specific to the site, and then goals that apply to the entire plan area. And so, when a developer is looking to do something on a project, they're looking at the master plan. The master plan is going to tell them, this is the intent. And so, I think that is where the, the, the sort of broadest impact is. But then, when the master plans are approved and the development applications are submitted, they are required to have a community meeting, they're required to send out notice, they need to do it within 45 days of submitting their application. And that, and so, there's that required initial meeting, then there are the signs that are required to be posted on, on the frontages. We are, so the, the master plan, the, our master plan team has been very creative over the last several years, and even, even before that, in coming up with innovative ways to reach people. And development review is, because it happens on a much shorter timeframe, we have, we have certain processes that, that we use. So, there's, there's the, there's the, the pre-application meeting, there's the signs, and there's the notices. But that's, that's the extent of the requirement. And so, we encourage folks, when they come in, we say, you know, you need to talk to your neighbors because you want them to be supporting this project in front of the planning board. If they, you know, if, if a group of citizens come in and say, this is terrible, they haven't talked to us, the planning board can have no reservations about saying, okay, let's put this on hold, and instead of doing it in 90 days, why don't you go do what you should have done before, and then come back when you're done? So, I think we, we encourage folks to reach out to their neighbors regularly, but it, outside of those sort of, those sort of required notice points, it's really about their relationship. And, but we're invited to community meetings, we're here tonight, and, you know, we, you know, any interested person who wants to know about a particular project, and we hear from all kinds of folks who want to know about pending development projects, you know, we're happy to meet with them and answer questions about the process, answer questions about the specifics of the application, you know, tell them how, how to be, how to be most effective. Sometimes, that's not always self-evident, so that part is really about the relationship.
If I can interrupt, I know you have more of your actual presentation to go through, but the, one of the things that's, that's special about Tacoma Park is that because we have planning staff and we work closely with the development review, part of the Development Review Committee and that kind of thing, we keep on top of that, and we've always had a commitment to share the information a little bit more thoroughly than may happen outside of the municipal boundaries. And we, when there's an application in one of the wards, we alert the elected representative, and it may be something that gets discussed at the city council with a resolution before it goes through some of these other stages, or at different points in that. And so, one of the things that, you know, they certainly are very helpful to any, any individual who wants to reach out to them, but we also try to be proactive on part of the city to make sure that it's something that's discussed and considered within the city. So, I just wanted to say that this is the general process, but we have our own process, and fed before anybody files an application, they're supposed to come to us first. And so, so there's a, there, you know, we do try to get a heads up about that, and there's a lot of interaction among the staff. Hey, did you know we just got this thing coming in? Or vice versa, so that we try to keep people apprised.
Yeah, keep going.
Okay. So, then there are amendments to those types of plans, and they fall into generally sort of three categories. A major amendment, totally change what, what you're doing, and then that follows the standard process. A, a smaller amendment that may change a, you know, something relatively insignificant to, to something that's important but not as important, and that can be heard by the full planning board, or can be done, reviewed on a consent calendar. And then there are administrative, we're moving bench A three feet to the right, that can be approved by the planning director. So, you know, it's, our process is sort of set up, well, our process is set up that developers tell us what they want to do. And if two years pass and they want to do something slightly different, they kind of have to come back through. And we try to work with folks to build in as much flexibility as possible, but if the flexibility isn't built in to the way we did at the first time, they'll have to come back. So then, a few others, there are some land uses that are limited uses, and those have additional standards that have to be met. There are conditional uses, which used to be called special exceptions. I think we see a fair amount of those in, in the city. Our staff reviews those, the planning board provides a recommendation, but the hearing examiner makes the decision on those, the final decision. And then, we have mandatory referral, which is for disposition of, of government property. So, as I mentioned, the Tacoma Junction, it's a city parking lot, so that will have a mandatory referral component. And the mandatory referral has sort of two main purposes. One is agency coordination for, for public projects, and then an analysis of master plan conformance, is this project consistent with the recommendations of the master plan? How could it be improved? Thank you. And, and that, the planning board makes a recommendation for that. Then we have a local map amendment, so this is a particular property wants to change its zoning in Area 1, these are typically floating zones, where the, the master plan says, okay, maybe it's okay to have this type of zoning on the site, but we don't, we don't have a high enough confidence level, or we don't have enough information to make specific recommendations about putting this zone actually on the site, so we'll put it as a floating zone, and if you want to rezone it to that, then you have to go through this other process. So, the council can sort of defer the deliberation that they would do for, for actually applying the zone to sort of a future date when there's more information. Again, the planning board will make a recommendation to the hearing examiner, who will in turn make a recommendation to the county council sitting as the district council, who will make the zoning decision, and depending on, on the use in the zone, there may also be a site plan. The most recent one that's sort of in the neighborhood is the police station on Sligo Avenue, was rezoned to a mixed-use zone for art space to come in and do their thing. So, because I forgot to bring cards, I added to the presentation here, my name, email, and phone number, so Roz has this, and, you know, we are, our door is always open, we take all comers, and we're happy to, you know, sit down for 15 minutes, half an hour, hour, sometimes longer, to, to sort of go through the process and answer questions.
Great. Any other questions this evening? Councilwoman Kostick?
So, I have a question related to the Tacoma Junction development. Where in this process are they? Are they, or, you know, is this something that it's been started, or it's kind of just in the preliminary?
So, so I think, so in terms of our process, they submitted an application last fall for something that I, I didn't put in the presentation tonight, but it is, because it, it's not in the zoning code, we have a concept plan, which is a, sort of takes you up to, it's sort of a free trip to DRC. And so, it is, you're welcome to, you're welcome to submit. And, hecklers, hecklers from the planning department, following me. And it, so it's basically, they submitted a concept plan, I think at the time they were considering two alternatives, and wanted to get agency comments on the two alternatives. I think we got comments from, from, from city staff, we provided recommendations. And so, it, it, there's no entitlement, there's no approval, it doesn't go to the planning board, it's just, it's just to sort of identify potential, you know, to identify potential issues. And I think the issues that we identified are probably the issues that you all have identified. And I think they are in, they're in the process of doing some of the initial work to submit the next stage of applications. So, I think just within the last few days, their, their traffic consultant has reached out to our staff. For every, for more or less every project, there's a traffic study, and that, the scope of that study has to be approved by our staff to make sure that the, the, the transportation impact of the development is looking at the right intersections. And so, there's been back and forth just within the last couple of days. So, I would, you know, once they have the scope, then they can, they can do the study. It's, you know, they need to do the study while schools in, in session. So, I, but I think, you know, so we, if it's, if it's the middle of February, we could be getting the application in the next month. But I understood that the, that the city council needed to approve the, approve their proposal before they submitted it, so.
Right.
So, you'd know, you would know more about that than I would.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
You mentioned you have certain tests, like schools, emergency services.
Yeah.
What happens when a project fails one of these tests? For example, the schools, we have all these overcrowding issues, especially down here. Does a developer have to pay into a school construction fund if, if the project doesn't meet your requirements? How, how does it work?
So, the subdivision staging policy, which is approved by the council every other year, sets sort of the development impact tax framework. I don't deal with that as often as others in the department. I think my understanding is the school tax was scrapped. So, and that's sort of handled downstream from us, but, I mean, essentially, you know, if a project, if staff cannot find that there are adequate public facilities to approve a project, then, or to support a project, we'll recommend denial, and the board will deny the project. What, what more typically happens is that the, for traffic, for example, impact will be identified, and then it will be mitigated. For forest conservation, there are impacts, and the impacts are mitigated, either onsite or offsite. For schools, there are, there are school tests that are done every year, and if a, if a school cluster is in moratorium, then the planning board can't approve any subdivisions in that school cluster. In the past, there have been sewer moratoria, where, in fact, the portion of our building where I sit was constructed during a sewer moratorium, so there are no bathrooms on the portion of the building where I sit. I have to go to the old part of that, to the building. True story. So, it's, so if, if there aren't adequate public facilities, there's no approval. But it's, in practice, yeah, it's more, it's typically more about mitigation.
Okay. Have you guys thought about the Ventas Hospital site and hospital zoning?
As little as possible.
I mean, that's, you know, that has come before us, you know, in the last few weeks, you know, a lot of big decisions are going to be, have to be made to decide what's going to happen there. Because of the current zoning, it's very limited in what you can put on that site. Have you talked to staff about ideas on, on a way forward?
So, so we have, we've been, we've been talking with, with your staff, I think more in the context of, of process, because it is easier to parse the process than it is to solve the problem of what to do with the zoning. of what to do with the zoning that's out there now and the buildings that are out there now. It's, it's, you know, it's zoned for single-family development and it's in a, let's say it's nestled. And so, you know, I think figuring out what actually happens there will take, will take some work, will take some time. And nobody's come to talk to us, at least to me, about it, but we've definitely been talking with Roz and Sarah about sort of the process implications.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, just two points I wanted to get a clarification on. One, you didn't really say much, if anything, about how you interact with the historic commission if there's a historic district thing. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. So, the Historic Preservation Commission for projects that are located in a historic district or that will have an impact on a historic resource will go through the HPC process, sort of in parallel to our process. So, their process is sort of officially more abbreviated, but there are initial consults that we encourage them to begin. I think the most recent one that I did was the, in Bethesda at the Purple Line Station, there was the hardware store historic site. And I think for the Tacoma Junction closer to home, I think, you know, the HPC will be involved in, you know, the review of what the impact of the historic district will be. So, they are, they have their own process and, you know, their staff is in our department and we work closely with them.
And then on master plans, which you have up here, to what extent are they binding or kind of guidance or some version of both of those?
So, zoning is, essentially has the force of law and so if it says the number is six, it can't be higher than six. Master plans are recommendations in the language, all master plans is the master plan recommends. And I think the intent there is to, you know, when, when master plans are written, you know, I think, who knows what's going to happen, you know, in detail 10 years from now, so there's a little bit of flexibility. And the findings that the board has to make are substantial conformance. Having said that, I think the staff and the board take very seriously the recommendations of the master plan, you know, whether it's the Tacoma Park master plan or the Bethesda Downtown Plan or the Bethesda CBD Plan or the Chevy Chase Lake Sector Plan. We take those very seriously. And, you know, there are, there are times when, you know, an applicant will come in and say, hey, the, you know, the recommendations in this plan are 20 years old or they're 15 years old and, you know, a lot's changed in place A, B, or C and maybe a different approach is needed. And, you know, in that case, you know, we consider it and we either agree or we don't agree and we make our recommendation to the planning board and if three of the five members of the planning board are persuaded, then they can approve something that's contrary to the letter of the plan, but we take them very seriously.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilwoman Circe?
I think you answered my question. So, one of the big lessons learned was, you know, trying to interpret recommendations versus what's mandated or required under the, specifically this Tacoma Langley Sector Plan, that is full of really nice pictures of what it may be, which made it a little challenging for residents when confronted with a potential development, to try to, you know, understand the difference between what may be possible, the future that is in the sector plan, and what the sector plan is actually able to behold in a developer too, which is more limited to zoning setbacks, those kinds of things. So, I mean, is it, is it ever the case that a community could try to push for certain recommendations that are in a sector plan to be upheld as it relates to a specific development?
Right, I mean, we, so we actively encourage everybody who wants to, to push for what they think needs to happen. What can sometimes be the case, though, one of the other cases that we did not too long ago in Tacoma Park is the Taco Bell on Hampshire Avenue.
Yep, that was, yep. That's my word. I lived through it.
And so, you know, it was, and I wasn't, you know, I didn't work on the sector plan, but I don't, you know, that's not the vision in the plan.
Yep.
And, you know, I think we do hear frustration from residents, frankly, from folks within the building, that this is really not what everybody worked on for three years. But, you know, in some cases, the reality is that, you know, economic cycles have been flow and so what, you know, master plans are, you know, they're a 20-year vision and so they may not be an 18-month vision or a two-year vision or a three-year vision. And so, for that project, you know, we tried to do the best that we could to, I think, capture some of the transportation improvements or not preclude some of the transportation improvements that were envisioned, not to preclude some of the block designs for those areas. But, I mean, the reality is such that, you know, sometimes what's envisioned in the sector plan is not going to be proposed by a developer two years after the plan is done. And, I mean, you know, we appreciate that it, it's frustrating to work on a plan for three or four, five years and then at the end, sort of be in an economic climate that's really probably not going to yield, at least in the near term, that vision. But I think the vision is important because, you know, things change and so when, when the desire or when the economic impetus is there, the guidelines are there to shape it. So, sometimes it's frustrating that things don't happen as soon as they want, but sometimes you have to deal with sort of where you are.
How often are these master plans or sector plans revisited? Is it once every 20 years?
You know, it is, so the county councils, okay, so the county council sets our work program and so they decide what plans we work on. So, that means, so the, one of the most recent ones we did was the Bethesda Downtown Plan that was 2018, I think was last done in 1994, 1992. The Silver Springs CBD Plan has been around for a while. You know, the West Bard Plan had been around for 30 years. And so, it is, you know, there are a variety of things that drive the council's prioritization of what plans we work on. And so, while we intend, or the idea is that there are sort of a 20-year vision, it's not necessarily, okay, it's been 20 years, let's, let's work on that one.
And it's hard to predict the future, so, you know, I totally, totally understand that. Thank you.
If I could just add to that for a minute, with the, with the introduction of some of the newer zones, the mixed-use zones that we've had since 2014 and maybe a little before that, they identify public benefits. And what we've started doing with our master plans is setting priorities in the master plans for what we think those benefits should be. So, a good example would be affordable housing. And some of the master plans where we have, where we feel like the need is greater for some affordable housing, we will set that as a top priority. So, when a plan comes in, one of the development applications, if they're not, if they're not implementing or trying to achieve some of that affordable housing that was a priority, we can come back and say, well, that's not the vision of the plan. That's one example. There's some other ones in the Bethesda Downtown Plan. We have set parks and open space, affordable housing, and energy inefficiency as probably the top three priorities. And so, if they're not achieving those when they come in or not even trying to, trying to come close to it, we come back and we say, no, that's not, that's not in keeping with the substantial conformance with the master plan. And we set that tone very early on, so if they don't submit a plan that's in keeping with that, then we let them know.
Excellent, thank you. Great. Any other questions this evening? No? This was really, oh, sorry.
I did have one other question, which might have gotten covered when I stepped down. Say again how the city permitting processes, how and when they interact with this? I thought I heard someone say that the city approvals precede all of this generally?
So, if somebody comes in with the application for something, we ask them at least to stop in and talk with our, our planning folks. And we have a municipal letter that we write that says, gee, you know, we have tree law, stormwater authority, road, you know, curb cut things, those kinds of things, to give them information before they even go over to Park and Planning, so that they know what role we play. For the more substantive developments, those are things where there will be back and forth. You know, we certainly benefit from the Development Review Committee's input by all these different agencies at one place. So, a lot of the technical information we get there, we share our own technical information at that table, what we do with stormwater, what we'll do with trees, that kind of thing, so that the full list is there. The actions then may come before, if there's a discretionary element about a proposal, will come to the city council for a resolution about, you support it, you support it with conditions, you oppose it. It's best if the kinds of comments that you make are the kinds of comments that the planning board or others also take into consideration, so that, you know, we're using the criteria that is in the development process and say, you know, what we'd like to see with that. There's a couple extra steps for certain things. If it's a development plan that the final authority is with the planning board, the city council's resolution has great weight when it goes to the planning board. And if the preference of the city council is not shared by the planning board, it takes a super majority of the planning board to override that. If it is an action that then is not finally determined at the planning board level, but needs to go to the, to the county council acting as the district council, again, the city council has that same triggering, super majority provision. We, as staff, take those very seriously. We prefer not to do that unless it's a serious matter. And because we're usually pretty good about that, it's taken pretty seriously by the folks we work with, because they know that, first of all, we generally have a very robust community process. So, it, and often it's in the evening, it's not like having to go to the daytime hearing somewhere else, so we often have more people involved and can, and can kind of assimilate that information in a, in a more coherent way to pass on. I find that useful. I think, you know, the staff at Park and Planning would be really overloaded if they dealt with us at the level that we deal with our residents, but that's, that's some of the back and forth that we have.
That was actually my second question. That was actually my second question, was the interaction.
The interaction with any, when and if the county council wanted to weigh in on the project. So, that was my, I'm done, thank you.
And then just one, you mentioned the word permitting and that's not something we've talked about tonight, because the County Department of Permitting Services in Rockville does building permits. So, once the planning board, so somebody needs site plan approval to get a permit, they'll go to Rockville and go through the permit process or, I mean, you know, they'll, they'll work here if it's a city project for, you know, road access issues, as the manager said, but permitting is after what we do.
Great, well, thank you so much. This was very nice to meet you in person and this was very helpful.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Abson, thank you. All right, now we'll go on to, as I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, we're going to talk now about the discussion of school facility needs, because we thought that followed nicely on this discussion, as Councilmember Smith's question raises this, so we'll go to that PowerPoint.
My presentation will be popping up here in a moment, I think. Voila. So, we've had a couple kind of brief discussions about school facility needs in the area and the, I wanted to go through because there's some decision points coming up that I thought that people should know about and understand what's involved. And I prepared a presentation that is fairly, I think the deputy city manager said, lots of words, I'm not going to read every word, but the point of this is so that as this lives on, on the website, et cetera, people can go back and look at it and see some of the, some of the matters. So, I'd like to talk a little bit about public schools in the Tacoma Park area. Tacoma Park Elementary and Piney Branch Elementary are paired schools. You go K2 through Tacoma Park Elementary, then to Piney Branch Elementary for grades three through five. Rolling Terrace Elementary is just a few blocks outside of the city limits, but a number of students, yeah, not now. Nope, let me get back up. A number of students at, in the city of Tacoma Park go to Rolling Terrace. And Tacoma Park Middle School is within the city limits. I'm not putting here private schools, I'm just mentioning some of the public schools. Tacoma Park Middle School, which is grades six through eight, is currently in a planning process for expansion onsite. That's all I'm going to talk about the middle school tonight. So, the focus of the presentation tonight is on public elementary schools and I wanted to bring up just how many students we're talking about. If you compare American Community Survey, Census estimates from the 2010 American Community Survey versus the 2016 American Community Survey, which looks over a five-year period, the students within ages five through 14 increased between those six-year period by 330 students. That's half a school. It's just an incredible number of new students in, in the city of Tacoma Park. And the under-five population is, it's going to keep coming. We've got, went from about 1,100 to 1,300 in that, in that category. Tacoma Park Elementary School has an enrollment currently of 647. Its official capacity is 629 and it's on a 4.7 acre site. Piney Branch Elementary, enrollment 612, capacity of 611, so about a capacity. There's no room for portables onsite. The future estimate of capacity of 726 would be if there's the kind of five-classroom expansion that's been discussed. And that's not approved, but it's, it is, it's in the COP as a, as a proposal. The site is only two acres. So, the total number of students for those paired schools are about 1,259. Rolling Terrace is a K through, is a K through six, K through five school. Its enrollment is 903. Its capacity is just 747. It's on also a small site, 4.3 acres. It has a partial immersion program and a school-based health center. And there's been lots of discussion about how do you pull programs out or whatever so that there's enough room for students, which isn't always the popular option and it may not be the best option for a community that needs programs. The MCPS, Montgomery County Public School System, has some desired criteria for an elementary school and they like seven and a half acres, they have a goal of 740 students and when you talk, they don't want fewer than 740, 740 students and they don't want more than 740 students. And they look at a number of criteria, location, topography and environment, access to the site, utilities to the site, physical condition of the site, availability and timing of the site, and cost. So, in November, the school district, at the urging of the Board of Education, undertook a site selection committee, advisory committee, to try to find space for more kids, for the, what's called the lower down county area. And they had three meetings, they looked at open space primarily, and they had criteria that really only identified two sites that met the criteria and it was really quite remarkable. And since we're not normally and it was really quite remarkable. And, and since we're not normally involved in these kinds of issues, we've not had this kind of a site selection committee in this area, the, how the process functioned was very new to me, and I was very taken aback. And so I think you'll see some of our comments about that. The committee invited 34 members representing various governmental agencies, some PTAs, some neighborhood associations, and in fact, not that many people showed up for most of the meetings, because they were on November 15th, December 12th, and January 3rd. I did appoint our community development manager, Ross Grisby, for the city to sit on, in those committee, in that committee. And here's a little map of the, of the down-county consortium. So when we're talking lower down-county, I would assume it means, you know, part close to Tacoma Park. They did look at a number of sites, and those are shown on here, and there's a site selection advisory committee report online, that you can read all about each of these sites. I want to give some acknowledgement to M C P S, that they do have a difficult challenge. And I know that there's a little bit of sensitivity, are we jumping on M C P S? And I don't want to do that. I recognize that they are trying to accommodate a large number of students that they didn't realize were coming down the pipe, and needing to find a place for them. School sites in Tacoma Park are small, can't expand much onsite, were developed, so there's not many open spaces available. And because of that, the cost of using space is, is higher than it might be in a, on a field. So the committee came out with a recommendation using criteria that were provided to them, and the recommended site for a new school is Forest Grove Elementary School, which is a, it's a former elementary school being used currently by Holy Cross Hospital. It's on the north side of the Beltway, and it's about four miles from the tip of Tacoma Park, from the southern tip of Tacoma Park in Montgomery County. They also, there was a second site that was, kind of got the second number of points, and that was McDonald Knowles Elementary School site, a little bit farther north, and that site is leased by the A R C of Montgomery County.
What's A R C?
It used to be Association of, for Development of Disabilities. I'm not sure what all, how the title is anymore. I think they just go by A R C. So the schools that are in and near Tacoma Park, as I mentioned, Tacoma Park Elementary, Piney Branch Elementary, Rolling Terrace, there's also East Silver Spring, New Hampshire Estates in Oakview, which are paired schools, and, and several that are a little bit farther out. So as the report came out from the, the advisory committee, we wrote comments on that report, and so I'm sharing the city staff comments here, and it is in the document. It's listed as a minority report. But the kind of key things, key takeaways of, of living through this process are that M C P S had a process that did not look at where students live versus where the location of sites were. They didn't have an opportunity to consider that really the environmental impacts of construction. Many of the sites that they looked at were parks. And so what is the impact of taking parkland from a very densely developed community, and what, what is the cost of replacing those parks, or the, the mental cost of not having those parks? There was not really a discussion about if you did a new school here, what difference does that do to the projected, the plans for Piney Branch Elementary School or something? That wasn't part of the discussion. And, and there was not any information on what kind of the acquisition process or cost implications would be. The members of the committee had criteria, had eight criteria, and they were, had to grade for each site, each of those criteria, by a plus one, a zero, or a minus one. There was kind of no way to have anything that was more subtle, or more, more informational in that grading. Only initial costs were considered, under cost, so not the cost, ongoing operating costs. And there wasn't anything that, that you could say, gee, yeah, this is a negative one because of environmental points, and it's really not a good site for environmental reasons. You couldn't give it more than a minus one. So it, it kind of steered how the criteria, how they led to the two sites that they got. The committee looked at 12 public and five private sites, and, but the, but the staff of the M C P S did not, before having this meeting, really have the kind of consultation with other agencies that could have helped provide better information on those sites. A number of the sites had development plans approved already, so they were not able to be used. They shouldn't have been brought to the table. They, there was no way to discuss, and there hadn't been any discussions about, well, this site, if we, if we use this site, it might cost a little more, but it helps advance a number of other county goals, or meets other community needs that we might want to address. Those kinds of discussions hadn't been able to take place. And, and they didn't really talk, and weren't able to talk about, much about the five private sites that were mentioned. So we have some recommendations that M C P S should have a policy about when, and when to use parkland. You know, what, at what point is parkland appropriate, and in what part really isn't it not appropriate? And nine of the 12 sites were parkland. If you have these policies or criteria in advance, it might help direct the discussions, that this parkland is not as, is not as well-used, or whatever, is something else, and so it may be more available. And really thinking about it, we had a discussion about development review a little bit ago, talking about master plan processes. The school district prefers, and rightfully so, to know that a certain site has been set aside by a master plan as a good place for a school. When there's not one of those sites available in an area, and M C P S is starting to see that there's increasing enrollment in that area, and so maybe a need for a new school, rather than wait till it's a crisis point, and then have a three-meeting process that looks at immediately available open space, it would make sense to have something like a sector plan process, where there really was a community discussion about where's, you know, in general, where's the right place for an elementary school when we get to that point. Don't wait till the schools are already full, you know, have, have that, have a more, you know, more thoughtful approach to doing that. It would allow for a comprehensive discussion with the public and with the agencies. And, and it really would help come up, I think, with some opportunities for these shared solutions to community needs. Tacoma Park has some specific challenges. The first is, we're on the border of Washington DC and Prince George's County, so we can't do the kind of school redistricting that something more in the middle of Montgomery County can. We cannot send our kids south or east across the county line to go to school and stay in a public school. And so when there's schools that might be added north of the Beltway, we may end up having to bus our children north to get to those schools. And there's a domino effect about how, how student enrollment would go. And I want to note that, if you look at the public schools in Tacoma Park, 73% of the students are of color in the three schools that we're talking about. And so if, if we're having to bus them, we're not allowing them to walk to school, take advantage of the school benefits to the neighborhood, that's actually a disparate impact that we should be worried about. One of the things that really wasn't discussed is that, you know, we are interested in increasing development along New Hampshire Avenue and our corridor, and we're looking at mixed use, so some more residential. What does that, you know, we'd like to get that moving. But as was discussed a few minutes ago, there's an adequate public facilities law. At what point do we end up not being able to do residential development? If we've got a great project going forward, and we can't do it because our schools are full, that's a real shame. And, and so that's something that obviously we would want to have addressed soon. We do have some opportunities. Councilmember Smith mentioned the hospital, essentially vacating the property. It actually meets most criteria for the school sites, which is really rare in down-county areas. You know, it's got about nine acres, so easily accommodates seven and a half acres. Biggest issue is going to have a building on it, and it has a cost associated with it. But the other thing that's an opportunity about Tacoma Park is that we have some kind of, some familiarity with some non-traditional elementary schools, the split schools. There may be some other options that we would be, you know, willing to take on. They don't all have to be something that looks like it's in only or further out. It could be something that's got multiple levels, or has a combination of uses. And so there may be some things that we could discuss about that. We'd love to sit down as city staff and talk with the school officials and the county officials about what can we do, given our challenges and our opportunities, to see if there's some options that we could bring back to you. Right now, the, the advisory committee's recommendations are online. The report is open for public comment until it's presented to the Board of Education on March 22nd. On the 20th, the superintendent of the schools, Jack Smith, is going to provide his recommendations on this report, and that will also go then to the Board of Education. And the idea is that this will go into the capital improvement program and, and move fairly quickly. It will really make a difference as to what they may decide to do with Piney Branch Elementary School. And I anticipate that, you know, there's actually very little time for those kind of conversations to take place. Now, it always takes a while to do the planning, and it always takes a while to, to, to actually get into construction. But it, it's a fairly short timeframe, and it does make, I think, a tremendous difference for the city of Tacoma Park. We have a, we have a tradition with the City Council of mostly staying out of school curriculum issues and a variety of those kinds of things. But when it comes to actually facilities, land use, that is something that is a Tacoma Park, Tacoma Park issue, and it is something that I think is appropriate for a City Council to weigh in on. If the council would like to weigh in on this, we'd need to put a resolution on very shortly, and we can use some of the comments that the city staff has come up with, or your own comments, to, to draft a resolution for your consideration, if you'd like to do that. I'm going to leave it there for, there's lots of information on our project page, and happy to follow up with any questions you have.
Great. Is the, is your PowerPoint presentation up on the website yet, or?
Did you put it up yet?
It's fine up here.
It'll be up very soon.
Very soon. Okay.
This, this presentation.
Yes, this presentation. Great. And I just want to say thank you to Ms. Grisby, who's still here, for taking part in those meetings, writing the minority report that was submitted. We appreciate that. And I'll open up to my colleagues, but I'll say that I would support us moving forward with a resolution in the upcoming days. And I have some points here that I'd like to highlight in that, but we can get to that in a moment. The one question I did have is, so if you go back to the timeline, so the superintendent's going to give his recommendation this Tuesday? I said, just seemed odd to me. I wanted to just make sure that was February 20th.
Well, yes. So, so basically, the advisory committee's recommendations go to the superintendent, who then does something with them.
But public comments open until the 22nd.
Right. Because the public comment really goes to the Board of Education.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to double check, I was reading that right.
There may be some tweaks, you know, aspects of that I'm not familiar with, but that's my understanding that, about where it lives.
Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. And thank you again to the city manager and Ms. Grisby for your work on this. I, as I mentioned at our previous meeting, I'm concerned about this for a couple of reasons. I think one is that it doesn't seem like this process has met the needs of our community, and that it's overlooked a lot of opportunities here. And as you mentioned, it seems to really provide some issues for our anticipation of development along New Hampshire Avenue, which I think could be a huge disadvantage if we don't have the capacity to have those students in our schools.
Right.
And then secondarily, I think just the process itself seems incredibly problematic, from it being a rushed process, to even the factor of them looking for an acreage of 7.6 acres, I think it was.
Seven and a half, yeah.
Which I think, considering any site down-county, especially south of the Beltway, just inherently sort of provides some issues. So I would definitely like to see us weigh in with a resolution. And I think it could cover a lot of the points that, that were covered in the minority report, that were discussed here. I definitely think it should include discussion of the development point that we've been discussing, and our vision for the city moving forward with development around the purple line and increased residential development there. I also would like to see possibly a mention of the acreage issue, and the fact that some flexibility on that should be considered, because it's obvious, we have schools that are already accommodating 900 students and only 4.5 acres. So it's obviously possible to do. And then I, I think this was already in the information, but just the walkability issue.
Right.
And capacity for the community to walk.
Yeah, I just briefly mentioned that, but it was something that was an important part of our, our comments back to the committee. And, and on that, not only is it important to do the walkability, but the cost of actually busing people is a ongoing expense for M C P S.
And then, I guess if there's a way to word in our report, a recognition that there are other parts of the county that are also experiencing overcrowding, I don't want it to be seen as we're here just complaining about Tacoma Park, and we think we're the only ones that have an issue. And I don't think we have to elaborate on that. But I think if there's a way that we can kind of recognize that other areas might need accommodations as well, but that, you know, I think it's really important that we, as a council, are standing up for what our city needs and what our community needs. And I think that would be worth mentioning. It also made me think, as you were talking a little bit about the master plan and the sector plan, that maybe this resolution could be used in a way, somehow the wording could be used for, I don't think we can identify a specific place that we want a, a school, but that this is sort of almost our own version of creating a master plan, saying we think we need a school that accommodates these additional students moving forward, you know, kind of in our own sort of informal master plan for the community. And then I just had a couple of quick questions. You mentioned that the process was, this was a new process, or it was not a new process?
It was new to me. It's not, it's not a new process. They've, they've done it for the last few years in, in other parts of the county. I have heard from folks involved in that, in those processes in other parts, that it, it also was difficult for them, and the very strict use of the criteria really did, was challenging for the members of other committees as well.
And then finally, I really liked your point regarding supporting policies for parkland use. I think that should definitely be included in the resolution. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Nibala?
Yes, I, I would support trying to come up with a resolution that would reflect the sentiments of the council here, and hopefully of the community. This is an issue of concern to me, as you all know already. I do have a question about whether the City Council in the past has done a resolution of this sort before, about school facilities.
Well, I mean, it's been a really long time since there's been a school.
School issue.
School issues. And we certainly have weighed in on Piney Branch Elementary School.
And we did send a, a letter to the school board about their capital improvement plan a year and a half ago, two years ago, and I testified in front of the school board.
Can we do this by a letter instead of a resolution, as a council?
I would propose a.
It's up to, it's up to you, but I think that.
I'm just thinking about the timing.
I think there's time for a resolution, and I think that's preferable, because it has a different weight.
Okay.
But that's.
Yeah. I also think it's, it goes into our record, right? So the difference between a resolution and a letter is that.
So the difference between a resolution and a letter is that, you know, it's in our record. It's policy that we have established. So if other issues come up, just like when we do our legislative, we decide what bills to weigh in on Annapolis, we've established that as policy. It's a little easier going forward. With a letter, it's not our established policy.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. And I agree with many of the things that have been mentioned so far about the content of the letter. I would add one other thing, which is when I looked at the report, it's based on a bunch of assumptions. And one of them is that there will be expansion in the very near future in Piney Branch and East Silver Spring and a couple of others of the very down county schools. And I would think we'd want to just make that crystal clear, that that assumption, we want to see that through there.
Ms. Grinsby, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to clarify.
Oh, you're not on yet, so...
I just wanted to clarify how the discussion went on the committee with the new site possibility and the expansion projects that are already in the pipeline. So Piney Branch expansion as well as some others. And the committee was told that the expansion plans would be reevaluated vis-à-vis a new school site.
That's not what it says in the report.
But there wasn't any more detail than that. So depending on, presumably depending on where the site is and where the impacted population, how the impacted population would be affected by that site would be reevaluated. But there wasn't a sense of what that outcome would be. It was left very vague.
Where in the report, it says very clearly in the first page or two, that these things will happen in these fiscal years, Piney Branch will expand and whatever the other two are.
Well, that's the list that they looked at. One of the things that was tough here is that they identified these schools and how many students are in the schools and how many students can be accommodated by these expansions that are listed. But then they didn't want to talk about what does, what... They absolutely steered clear of redistricting concepts. They didn't want to talk about where did the students live and what the needs were of the students in particular geographies vis-à-vis those expansion plans. So it's just a very, it was just a very restricted look.
Yeah, and we were told after the, we have numerous correspondence with folks at MCPS that the plans for Piney Branch, the feasibility study there is on hold until this decision's made.
Okay.
We've been told that multiple times over the past year.
Another reason to make it clear.
Councilmember Culver?
Thank you. One question I had, you mentioned the, there were these three meetings, maybe at kind of inconvenient times. Was there ever like public testimony taken or a public meeting of any kind or was it just this group meeting?
It was, they were open to the public so that people could watch, but I don't think there was an opportunity to speak, right? No, there wasn't.
And they weren't well-publicized.
What's that?
They were not well-publicized.
Yeah. So, I mean, I do think there should be a resolution also for the 22nd. Maybe though, it seems, and I just want to follow up on what the mayor said, it seems off in some way that the superintendent will submit his recommendations before this period closes. So what does that mean about, like, if we were to pass something and submit it presumably after his goes in?
I think the issue is that the CIP decisions are coming up very fast. So it's simply, they're butting up against that, the budgeting, the county budgeting process, and so they're trying to get it all squeezed in.
Right, but so in other words, he's one of the key decision makers and he'll be making his recommendations without the benefit of our input, right?
That's right.
But he has the minority report.
We have the minority report. I did send the letter, my personal letter, to the superintendent before the report came out. So I do know the office is aware. I've gotten some comments back that...
Well, I mean, I wonder whether we should even, whether we should even signal to them by the way, in addition, we're going to be passing something too.
I think we should. And, you know, I really would love it if there was an opportunity for the superintendent to talk with us. I just think that it's a significant issue for this community and the timeline is tight, so it'd be really nice if we had that opportunity.
So just two other things. On the question of the two sites that were, seemed to be the more favorite ones, were four and five miles from, I think you said, the southern tip of the city, right? So is there a distance above which, I assume there is, the students are automatically entitled to take the bus if they're not getting ride from their parents or whatever?
It's a quarter.
You know, I mean, do you know what the distance is?
Quarter of a mile?
It's like a mile, a little over a mile, I think, for elementary students. I think for, at least it used to be, high school students was two miles, but it's less, it's much less than that for elementary.
So under that, whatever the exact number is, even people who live, you know, more like where we are now, as opposed to down by the southern tip, pretty much everybody would get buster driven if they were to take one of these sites outside the Beltway, right?
That's right.
So when we did the earlier letter that the mayor mentioned, and my recollection, my recollection might be a little bit off, but I seem to recall that sort of one key theme of that was that there'd been a lot of, or an underlying theme of it, was that we've consistently been under-projected in terms of population growth around here. And I just sort of think about the fact that, you know, we've got rent stabilization, so we're intentionally inviting people who are not wealthy to live here, who are less likely to be able to choose to pay for anyway, private school. It just seems like there's a systemic, I'll just use the word "thing" on the part of the school officials that appears to me to be biased against what we're dealing with here. And so I think this is really important that we weigh in.
Well, the MCPS has acknowledged, the superintendent has acknowledged that they did not do a good job of projecting and that they have hired a new consultant to work on a better system of projecting enrollment.
But I guess I would say that error is potentially being compounded here.
That's right.
And I know you agree with this, but by then saying, okay, since we under-projected, we're going to pick school sites, so everybody who we under-projected is going to have to go somewhere else outside their city. And that just seems doubly unfair. And that should be reflected, to me, in a resolution if we do want it. Thanks.
Cool. Councilwoman Kostick, did you judge anything?
Yeah, I was just thinking, you mentioned, the city manager mentioned that we'd like to speak with the superintendent, that this could be a good opportunity. I wonder if in the resolution itself, we could call out that request, like, we would like to use this opportunity to talk more.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could. You know, one of the things that often is done is in transmitting the resolution, there's a cover letter from the mayor or whatever saying, you know, here's our resolution, we would like to meet with you about this. That's usually the nicer way to do it, but I can do it either way.
Yeah, that would be good. I think in the letter would be good.
Great. Let's see. I think I'll go now just to call out and kind of underscore what my colleague said in terms of different points here. I think we talked about the walkability, the future development, the equity issues on the under-projection, and I think the numbers that you pulled for your presentation tonight were really useful.
They're just astounding.
They're really astounding. You know, the other thing I was thinking about too, on the equity issues, is perhaps sending to the superintendent and the Board of Ed those charts that the researcher from the Urban Institute did showing the disparity. And the community might also underscore this point. I agree with what Councilwoman Kostick said about, you know, acknowledging, and CPS has a difficult challenge here. And I think also acknowledging that we, when we went through the feasibility study with Piney Branch Elementary, we were hoping that was going to set sort of a new tone for, or a new way we were going to be able to interact with MCPS facilities, folks. The fact that they came to the city, we had a sit-down meeting.
Yeah, it was a nice process.
You know, the residents who attended and went through that process and many of us who sat through those meetings, it was really a terrific process. And it is very unfortunate that this one fell far short of that. So I think it might be useful also in the resolution to acknowledge that we had just gone through a process that was a very good one. So, all right.
Okay.
Think we have enough on that one?
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously we are on a relatively short timeframe, but I'll try to put this in some format and then send it back out to you to make sure that I've covered the comments that you've got, so that a draft resolution is pretty close to what you want, that gets brought forward.
Terrific, all right. S H A, I think, is next. Ms. Wirth, wait, you're up.
My sense of the purpose to bring this up this evening is just sort of to kind of reiterate that the city has requested and hopes to have the second of a series of meetings that we hope will be ongoing with District III State Highway Administration staff. We had one in November or October.
October 27.
Yeah, and we've asked for another, which will be sometime mid-March. I think what we're hoping for on a staff level is to update the list of items that we want to bring to State Highway's attention, either requests or pending issues or difficulties. And so it would be helpful to collect that information from council members now, so we can, you know, have that pulled together for our next meeting. And then, of course, we'd report back to the council on that. The attachment to the agenda item was, I think, the list of issues that was raised in the October meeting with State Highway. The follow-up meeting, or no, that was a meeting that we had with Slater before the October meeting. So the October meeting was really the first time we'd sat down for several years and was kind of a scattershot list of all the various concerns. Some of the positive takeaways was we were very encouraged by their support of our ADA sidewalk retrofit and their willingness to loosen, and I use that word lightly, but basically work with us on not requiring full-blown design plans for the sidewalk work and allowing us to just pull a district permit and a traffic maintenance plan and proceed, knowing that we have the full involvement of engineering staff that State Highway uses as well to develop those plans. And we also were able to talk with them a bit about our LED streetlight retrofit, since many of our streetlights are coursing along state roads, though the city pays for the power of those, pays Pepco for the use of those lights. So we were trying to make sure that there wouldn't be any surprises or shocks to them when we went through our conversion project. So those were some of the major takeaways, as well as they were going to get back to us on a number of the other issues, including the traffic signal conversion and other requests that we had ongoing for new sidewalks on Carroll Avenue, looking at traffic signals, the Piney Branch-Ritchie Avenue intersection, and then some of the concerns along 410 that Councilmember Culver has raised relative to the pass signal work, as well as signage, speed limits and whatnot.
I guess one of the things that I want to kind of have a takeaway from tonight's discussion is that we are hoping that what we're expecting to be about three meetings a year with the District III folks will be an effective way to systematically go through the issues that affect us on along state highways. And as such, be a better approach than just individuals contacting S H A with, oh, I have an idea, I have a question. I mean, obviously, there's going to be some of that when it's an immediate issue, but from a better perspective to say, these are the city's issues. And it's also a good way for us to be able to work through them and check them off the list when we go through them. There's going to be some things that aren't going to happen. And so I wanted to kind of share this, compare this a little bit with how we do lobbying. There's sometimes, there's bills that we want and there's just no hope in a particular session that that bill's going to go forward. So there's a certain amount that you don't butt your head against a wall on that particular item. And so that's part of what, as we look at the list, there may be some items that we'll keep on the list, but we just know are unlikely to proceed on and maybe aren't as crucial to us that we, you know, we just keep them there and hope for a change, that we can move on. But it's also useful that if there's a couple key ones that we identify, that, you know, we have got to get the traffic signal switched over to Montgomery County, okay? That's not, that one just has to be at the top of the list almost. And so, you know, trying to make sure that in advance of these meetings, council members, you identify what issues that you know of, that there's a little bit of a sense about which of these, if people feel, you know, a majority of the council feel really strongly about that we need to move forward on. And then there's, you know, obviously there's staff ones as well, because we have a different relationship we have with S H A that might be a little bit more technical, that we would identify in that same vein. We get this so that it's a good process, so that we really end up with a working relationship with S H A as opposed to what feels like one-offs a lot of the time. And so, as Darryl mentioned, the list is what we took into that early meeting. The other things have been brought up since then with S H A that we need to add on to a list. But we need something that's a good rolling list that then the council's familiar with and we are able to focus on a couple of things. And I don't know how the best way is for the council to identify the real top priorities. And so that may be something that you might want to talk about now, or maybe there's a different process you want to follow, so.
Great. And I just want to underscore too, when we did have the meeting in October with Mr. Young and many of the people, one of the things that, or actually even with Mr. Slater before that, when he first became the administrator of State Highway, one of the things that has been communicated to us is that our district is, has a lot, experiences a lot of turnover.
It's amazing, a lot of new staff.
A lot of new staff. And also that they're understaffed a great deal, especially relative to other districts for State Highway. And so I also think when we talked about how to get projects done, this was something that Mr. Slater himself said would be, and Mr. Young, would be very useful in terms of having S H A be more responsive to us, given that they're understaffed and there's, seems to be a lot of turnover for whatever reason in our district. But having this list and having these periodic check-ins with them, they thought that this was a good way to kind of keep focused and get the work done. I was also going to suggest that now that we have our intern coming on, I think this might be, one, a good thing for the intern to help work on and perhaps be able to, you know, create a document that, maybe it's a Google Doc or something that is easy to add on to, have, you know, in a spreadsheet form, to be able to put notes and other things, and that that might be one of the things...
That'd be great. That sounds like a good idea for you.
Yeah, working with them. Because I do know, even just coming out of that meeting on October 27th, like, that meeting was so long, we talked about so many things, you know, even just now, the new policy on bus shelters and came up in that meeting.
That's right, that's right.
In addition to the lights on the Carroll Avenue Bridge. So there were a number of things. And so, yeah, so I'll stop there and see if my colleagues have any other questions or things about moving forward with this.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if this is the time to mention individual projects. Is the idea that we would just submit those or things that were left off somehow?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, like, what's the best way to do that?
You know, frankly, I mean, I think that if there's, if there's some that you feel very strongly about as a group, it's great to identify them now or later, but I think that just partly given the lateness of the hour and the fact that we didn't, we don't have an easy document to just update, it's a little bit easier to get the emails. You know, I do know that part of the discussion here, and I, after Councilmember Culver mentions and finishes his questions, I know that Councilmember Siemens, who's very concerned about Piney Branch and Ritchie. And so this, you know, for something that's like that, it may be useful to take a few moments about saying why that's an important one. And so I, so there may be some specific things. We certainly have your list from before.
Yeah, I'll submit, I'll submit the list, just a couple that weren't on the list that did come up at the meeting, and I'll just reiterate, are the addressing in some fashion the speed going down the hill on Philadelphia Avenue from the area by Montgomery College down to Piney Branch and the other stretch of it up to the firehouse, it's 25 miles an hour, there it's 30. And they indicated a willingness to do a study of the speed and it seems like maybe they're doing that, so they might be moving in the right direction on that. So that's one thing. The ADA sidewalk compliance along the same area is very important, and we may be talking about that in the next agenda item. And the Tulip Carol light issue, which has been ongoing and I think somehow didn't make it onto the list, I know there's been a lot of talk about it.
We did discuss it at the meeting.
Right, we did. So I just wanted to make sure. And the one newer one I would add, there's a number of other... I would add, there's a number of other, there's issues related to the intersection with Tacoma Avenue that I talked about, and some safety issues smaller along the stretch. But understanding what, if anything, they have to say about the WSSC Water Main Project would be the other thing, because they would have a role in that, too. So I don't want to go into any more detail than that, but.
Okay. And then, we don't have a time yet set up for the meeting, correct?
No.
Yeah. So it might be that we, since the intern starts February 20th, that we could at least get this into a better format, that people could then add to it, and we might be able to bring it back.
That's right. But it will be, it will be probably like the second week of March, it sounds like, second or third week of March.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, I lost track. Councilwoman Cierci.
So I just want to, one, I think it's great for us to have a list of priorities, especially given that a number of these activities are going to require quite a bit of time for S.H.A. to implement, and it's a multi-stage process for some of these things. But I do want to stress for residents, like, if you see something that is a matter of health and safety, you know, an intersection light isn't working properly, or there's a huge pothole on New Hampshire Avenue, that we're in no way suggesting that you don't put in a ticket with S.H.A.
No, please, please.
Like, we still need people to continue to do that, even though we have this list. So this list is not all-inclusive of the only items.
And it's not the, and it's not the urgent items. I mean, you are absolutely right. There's, one of the things that's very nice about S.H.A. is that on their website, if you click on Contact Us, there's ways that you can call them if it's an immediate issue, and there's ways to enter an email problem online. And so, we certainly encourage people to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I bring apologies from some of my more loving constituents who weren't able to make it because of Valentine's Day. But they did indicate that they were interested in this topic. I really appreciate that you have remembered to include the concerns that we've heard about the intersection of Piney Branch and Ritchie Avenue. As you'll remember, traffic patterns have changed significantly over the past few years with the access restrictions on some of the Montgomery County streets in Sligo Park Hills, and also with the repairs on the Carroll Avenue Bridge, or replacement of Carroll Avenue Bridge, the detours built new habits for drivers. And they found Ritchie Avenue to be an appealing route to take, especially for commuting in the mornings and evenings. And that, the combination of those things, plus just the natural increase in traffic, has created problems at that intersection, especially in rush hours. And of course, as you know, Ritchie Avenue is a major pedestrian route for residents from Maple Avenue and other parts of Tacoma Park up to Silver Spring. And then with the school kids that use that route also, there are many accidents and near accidents at that corner. I'm not sure, you know, state highways used to get statistics on accidents, but now that, then insurance companies, you know, just say, you know, if it's a fender bender, don't report it, just exchange information, I'm not sure that they're getting as much accuracy in their statistics as they used to. But I do know that there are quite a few of those types of minor accidents there at the intersection. And of course, I do hear about the pedestrians that are threatened by the vehicles, if not struck. And there's a lot of near misses on pedestrians, which is a concern. So I'm glad to see this is in here with, you know, some look at the traffic volumes on Piney Branch and Ritchie. But I think the, what we really need is to look at within the city, and this goes beyond S.H.A.'s purview, just traffic patterns in that neighborhood. And I think that includes Ward 5 also, because of these changes in the traffic. I think to understand the real problem, maybe what we can do to resolve some of those issues is going to take some in-house work also.
Councilwoman DiBala?
Yes, thank you. I think this is a great idea. And I've heard a lot about S.H.A. in the last couple months. But I, there's one that I think is, that Daryl and I talked about a couple days ago, I think is, rises to the level of a priority, and that's the stretch of 410 between Prince George's and Elm that's been repaired a few times, everybody's shaking their head, been repaired a few times, and it may require coordination with WSSC. And therefore, it might rise to the level of talking to the, to a higher up about, because it would require coordination across a couple of utilities to get that one worked out. Apparently, that stretch just keeps failing.
It's a mess, yeah.
Yeah. So I'd like to see that added. But this is a good approach. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. Excuse me. Yeah, I want to agree with my colleagues. I think this is great, and I think it's a great opportunity to address these things with S.H.A. on a regular basis. I just had a comment, actually, about the agenda item. I feel like the racial equity impact statement on this one is particularly meaningful and was well thought out. So I appreciate that. And I think the more that we can use these meetings to make sure that we're addressing comprehensive issues in the city and looking at traffic flow throughout the city, not just one particular space in the city, I think can be really helpful. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Cierci?
So, quick question. For those areas where we already have, for example, like the Ethan Allen Gateway Project, or those places where there may be potential overlap, how should we handle prioritizing items for follow-up with S.H.A.? So if there's perhaps going to be reconfiguring of some of the intersection that we kind of talked about at, say, 410 and New Hampshire, you know, would that still need to be, or that intersection, or aspects of that intersection that have plagued us for a very long time, is that something that still needs to be on this list as a priority? And I reserve this as a discussion we can have offline. But I think it's important for us to try to make sure that we're highlighting with S.H.A. those things that perhaps we don't already have plans in place to replace. And then that will free up our list a little bit to focus on some of those other areas that will require attention and that we don't already have resources devoted to address. So I don't know if you, if you have any thoughts about that.
Well, I would see the same. You know, for those projects that already have State Highway approval, and we've got on our capital budget and funding plan, we wouldn't, we would in fact avoid wasting any time talking about them, because we're just going to proceed, and we have their approval, they'll have their inspectors, and unless, you know, those problems will be dealt with in the field, you know, as they come up. But, yeah, I really see this as either items where we haven't been able to get State Highway's attention, or there is no, you know, no agreement on a solution, and maybe we're at odds in terms of identification of the problem. So, yeah, it's basically, I would see the list as those areas where the city perceives an issue that State Highway is in authority to address, that we can't address, and then try to move them along.
Part of the meetings, though, I mean, one of the things that's really helpful is to get the people in the same room, because sometimes they're not aware of some of the projects that their colleagues have approved. And so, you know, it is useful, and this is where the utility plans come into play, too. It's like, here's what we're dealing with in this quadrant, you know, that they may just not be quite focused on, because they're just looking at 650, 410, whatever. So there's that list, but then there's also kind of an agenda for the meeting that may be able to have some other aspects.
Yeah. And I would also just encourage, you know, now that we've had the meeting with the staff that are working on the Purple Line, to also kind of take that into the fold. So, for example, we've been really trying to push for sidewalks at Carroll Avenue and University Boulevard. It's my understanding that with the Purple Line construction, the idea is that, you know, there will be sidewalks along that stretch. So that might be another area in which we could say, "Hey, this is something we've been asking you for, for a really long time. We know the Purple Line is coming through up University Boulevard. To what extent can we make sure that this particular intersection has some attention paid to it and is reconfigured, and we can get some new sidewalks as a result?"
Okay. And it's also great to have them come into the city.
Yeah.
Because that we saw with Mr. Slater. I mean, we could literally just stand up and point out the window about some of the projects. So I think that's also another advantage of getting them all here.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Terrific. Well, thank you very much. And, well, we have our first project for our intern. Awesome. All right, our last item this evening is our community development block grants.
Ms. Staines is coming forward. Need to, wait, need to get the mic, sorry. There you go.
Can you hear me now? Good evening. The City Council has asked this evening to provide comment on a staff proposal to use its FY19 CDBG allocation for a variety of ADA-accessible and curb cutter detectors, as well as other street scape projects throughout the community. We've identified with, in consultation with the Public Works Director, generally the areas that those improvements would be taking place in the upcoming cycle. For those of you who are familiar with the Community Development Block Grant Program, it is targeted towards generally populations that are identified as being low and moderate incomes. There are three different types of projects that these funds can be used for: capital projects, public service projects, and then projects which address an immediate need, like a flood or hurricane, or something like that. Roughly a year and a half ago, the City Council made a policy decision to no longer fund public service projects, the primary reason being the introduction of the Community Grants Program, and acknowledgement that because of the funding, the drawdown expenditures for the public service grants that we were able to fund with the Community Development Block Grant Program were so small, and the regulatory requirements were so onerous, that we ended up spending an inordinate amount of time and creating amazingly high frustration levels with the people that were getting the block grant funding. So we've been focusing the funds on capital projects. The first year that this was in, in fact, we directed a majority, or all of the funds for the Flower Avenue, Green Street project, because that area is in a low and moderate income neighborhood. And this year, we're proposing to augment the resources that are set aside for ADA improvements with some of the block grant money.
One of the things, just as a clarification, is that although usually for capital projects, CDBG funds have to be targeted to a particular census area that has a larger percentage of low and moderate income. But if it's for seniors or people with disabilities, that geographic tag does not apply. And so, a number of the locations this time are not in areas that otherwise would be identified as low and moderate income. It's looking more at who's the beneficiary of the improvements.
Yeah. They're defined as presumed beneficiaries. That also being said, the council is just part of the process for getting these funds dedicated for a project like this. The action that you decide to take regarding our proposal would then be forwarded over to the Montgomery County Council, and they would have to take formal action on whether or not the funds were appropriately expensed. There's also, in that process, an internal staff review at the county level to verify that what we're proposing meets all the bells and whistles as far as requirements. And then, at that point, they will also verify the dollar amount that's available. Right now, no one's going to commit to anything as far as how much funding might be available for this particular program, given some of the proposals that have been submitted at the federal level lately.
So, we're happy to answer your questions, but this is our best recommendation for what to do with what we think is maybe $91,000.
Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah. Two questions. About how much was it in previous years? About the same amount?
We've been sort of flat at about $90,000. My sense is that will probably be reduced dramatically, if not eliminated.
Yeah. All bets are off with this year.
All bets are off with this one, yeah.
And last year, you spent, we spent it on the Green Streets program.
Correct. It's in the budget.
Right.
For a variety of reasons, it'll be.
And what other, did you have other choices you looked at before you picked this one?
For the ADA improvements.
For this coming year, yeah.
It was basically a decision in terms of what eligibility requirements there are, and what projects were in the queue as far as things that had been identified by the council during its CIP process.
Okay.
The other thing, you may recall, I mentioned the, sort of, the regulatory requirements. They also apply to capital projects. So depending upon the scale or the amount of funding that's spent on a particular project, it kicks in a variety of other requirements, particularly Davis Bacon and bidding processes and things like that, which are very appropriate, but also add additional time and cost to the project.
Can you explain what Davis Bacon is? Unless you're doing them anyway.
Oh, Davis Bacon is a prevailing wage rates. So it involves going out on site, interviewing everybody to make sure that they're getting paid a wage that is appropriate based on the federal scale for what they're actually doing, that they're appropriately compensated for overtime work, et cetera.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the suggestion. I think, you know, this is stuff we're going to have to pay for anyways, so I think it makes sense to do this. And I imagine we'll be seeing many more of these, since we now have infrastructure money coming around.
Correct, yes. Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. I just had a question in relation to how this relates to the money that was budgeted anyway for sidewalks, or was budgeted in the previous budget. I was looking back at the 2018 budget, and it looked like there was money put towards sidewalks for ADA compliances. Was that not able to be completed, or how does this relate to that?
If I remember correctly, the ADA improvement money disappears like that.
We used it really fast. And we have, actually, when we come, I think it's next week, we talk financial, the quarterly report, and then we'll be coming forward eventually with a budget amendment. But we have an enormous amount of money that we need to spend on sidewalks.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's great that we are looking, I think we should dedicate money like this towards sidewalks. I mean, one of my concerns is just I want to make sure we are considering the state highways. And I know there is anticipated money that's going into that in the future. But I definitely think we should be prioritizing those, because it seems like those are ones that haven't been dealt with in a long time, because of the coordination with S.H.A. that wasn't figured out. So I think if we can prioritize those, I think that would be helpful.
That is the anticipation. The projects that I've identified in the memorandum are essentially to give you sort of a sense of what we're looking at doing. Again, they'd have to go through the county review to make sure that they're, they agree with us that this will all work.
Okay, great. Councilwoman Kovar?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Councilmember Kostic was asking about. So this is sort of an example of the list of projects that we worked on, but we have our own money that would also be applied toward this, too. Am I getting that right? So this is not the exclusive list of...
No, this is just, it's a small amount of money into a...
But this would be combined with other areas that aren't listed here, potentially? Or, okay. So the only other thing I would say is, there were some questions raised about, in the last round of the importance of monitoring the contractors a little more closely. I'd like to just put that out there as something that we should keep in mind.
That's it? Oh, okay. I thought I had, did you want?
Yeah, it's my question.
Okay.
No, my question was just about the site.
You disappeared.
You know, I always look for my name, and I didn't see Ward 6. And I know we have lots of issues, so.
We got all these new sidewalks!
We are. And then we waited a long time to get some of those. So, I mean, I think the thing that was very helpful to hear is that this list is in no way exhaustive. It's really just trying to identify those projects that, for a number of reasons, including how they collectively add up in terms of cost, presents the best portfolio to kind of get approval. And that makes perfect sense to me, yeah.
Just as an FYI kind of thing, when you look at the map that shows the CDBG-eligible areas in Tacoma Park, it is declining dramatically over the years. So, for example, Ward 6, which historically has been... So, for example, Ward Six, which historically has been an easy fit, now is limited to just the east side of New Hampshire Avenue. Ward Five, for better or for worse, is eligible for a fair chunk of change as far as the block grant program. So it shifts constantly. The map will shift again in 2019, I believe.
And I think, just kind of piggybacking on this, basically, this is always a puzzle, and where there's an opportunity to use different kinds of grant monies, we try to plug that in so that it builds the right combination to get the full list.
Great. All right, I think that's it, and this will come back for a vote, so.
Next week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we are adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it.
Thank you.